Good evening, everyone. This is the Acushnet School Committee meeting of Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open-meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream. And our link, the link to access this meeting is embedded in the agenda, which is posted to the town's website as well as the school's website. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as is practicable. So we're going to call tonight's meeting to order. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. And at home, silence your cellphones, please, or put yourself on mute with background noise. So we'll start with the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. If I may, request an approval of the school committee meeting minutes of December 8th, 2020, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our roll call vote.
Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if I could request a motion, please, for the approval of executive session meeting minutes of December 8th, 2020, not to be released.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those, oh, sorry, roll call.
Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finally, in this section, the approval of payroll and warrants, please. If Mike can request a motion of approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Kelly?
Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tebs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any old business, so moving into delegation. As a reminder, you can send your comments. They're welcome during our public comment section segment. You can forward your comments to our recording secretary, Kelly Benavides, at kellybenavides@acushnetschools.us. If you want to get those comments in, we're going to move on in our agenda and circle back to public comment later in the meeting. Gives you some time to get those comments in. Moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey?
Thank you. The first two items I have, I'll be very brief because the next two items are more of the crux of my report tonight. But as far as personnel matters, there's no changes since our last meeting. We have had first round of interviews for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and the committee has decided they'd like to move a couple of candidates forward. So we're in the process of that. Does anybody have any questions about that? Personal update report. The second thing is the FF-CRA update. As you had mentioned, the committee wanted an update each month since the committee voted to extend the FF-CRA benefits. So I will just quickly explain the spreadsheet that I've included in your packet. On the left, basically, it's all the employees who have utilized the benefits. The employees are listed alphabetically, so the names have been omitted on the report. But you can see when people have utilized. The emergency paid leave consists of both the COVID leave as well as the childcare leave. And then the emergency family medical leave is just simply the childcare leave. And you can see how that all plays out. But really, to pay attention to this month's report, the very right column, since you last extended the benefits, I'm just reporting out on the January costs. And you can see that four employees have accessed the benefits during the month of January. So the total on the bottom right comes out to $5,000, a little over $5,900 on that bottom right on the second page. But in terms of what we actually spent on substitutes, you'll see that the third column to the last is only $1,400 was required for substitutes. So again, only four staff members. We still don't feel like anyone's abusing this. They only use it as needed. So I feel like we're in good shape with that. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, so the next thing, I'm delighted to welcome Rebecca Ashley to tonight's meeting. She's actually kind enough. She's actually in a class right now, and this is her break time. Her teacher has allowed her to join our meeting tonight. But Rebecca has worked with a couple of other teachers to put together an update for the committee tonight entitled "A Day in the Life of a Hybrid Teacher." And I would also say, after watching the presentation myself, that it really gives you a glimpse into not only the life of a hybrid teacher, but also the life of our students, because students are very much featured in tonight's presentation. But I think Rebecca, being a fourth-grade teacher at Acushnet Elementary School, I think she's going to say it best. So I'd love for her to give us a little introduction to what you've put together tonight and lead us through it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm hoping that the following presentation will give you all a glimpse into the hybrid learning experience. I know the district had pretty high expectations, but I think both the staff and the students have adapted well from a hybrid teacher perspective. I believe this is due to our dedicated staff and our amazing tech department, as well as Monique Cote and Jean Downey, whose job expectations were basically reassigned for the whole year. Having the Wednesdays off for us teachers to plan, train, and collaborate has definitely contributed, I think, to how well we've adapted. We've been introduced to a lot of great Google extensions and apps, such as FootGrid and Kami and Pardeck. I think both in-person and remote learners have benefited from these, and I can totally see many of us using these when the pandemic ends and hopefully things return back to normal. As I mentioned, the students seem to have adapted to hybrid learning quite well, too. Even though our routine has changed, children still have one. We continue with specialties, snacks, and recesses. We've had a quite a few spirit days and even community project days. Teachers are still engaging their classes, but in new and unique ways. And in my opinion, I feel that the students feel that they are very safe being at school. So I'm hoping that all of you will find my sentiments represented in the following presentation. So without further ado, Mr. Oliver, go ahead and roll tape.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Can everyone see my screen?
Hello, Acushnet. Welcome to our show, Class Act. We are your hosts, Hudson Trahan and Sage Wadiers. Today, we're going to journey to Acushnet Elementary to see what hybrid learning looks like. We'll talk to fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Ashley, and we'll take a look at two specialty classes.
So thank you, Mrs. Ashley, for joining us. We are really eager to learn how you approach hybrid learning.
What would you see first in your day?
Well, we still start out with morning announcements, followed by our morning meeting. And in that morning meeting, it includes an interactive free-learning.
Good morning, students and staff. Today is Friday, January 22nd, 2021. It is the 77th day of the school year. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You and millions of other people are living with the horror of the Dust Bowl. Some are determined to stay on their farms. Many give up and move to large cities or to California to start a new life. Others travel to the Dust Bowl to write stories and take photos for the rest of the world to see. Choice number one: How many people want to stay on your farm? One. Choice number two: To leave your farm and find work somewhere else, please raise your hand or high-five me in cohort A. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. And then choice number three, if you want to be a government photographer.
Does your class have any new specialists?
Why, yes, we do. We still have physical education, but now we have SEL, social-emotional learning. We have Spanish this year, and we also have literacy, as well as music.
Remember, I'm going to choose one student. Okay, they're going to pick the question. I'm going to read the question twice, and then you're going to answer it. All right, everyone else, you're going to think about the answer in your head. Remember, if you get it right, you're doing 10 victory jumps. Okay? If you didn't know the answer, you're doing five squats. Logan, I don't really like push-ups.
Local motor?
Local motor?
Yeah, 400.
400, okay. Which movement do we hop on one foot and then hop on the other foot while we are moving forward? So which movement is it when you hop on one foot and then you hop on the other foot while you're moving forward?
Skipping.
Skipping? You guys, skipping is correct. 10 victory jumps and four points. All right, Sydney SpongeBob Squipants, you're up.
Hop on the other foot.
Um, exercises 100.
Exercises for 100. Which exercise do you continuously jump and make your body look like an X and an I? So which exercise do you continuously jump, making your body look like an X and an I?
Jumping jacks?
Of course, it's jumping jacks. You got it. One point. 10 victory jumps.
We just talked about how important it is to make connections. This is a great opportunity to walk next to a friend, have a conversation, learn something new about them. Even though you're in the same class, it doesn't necessarily mean that you know everything about them. So find out about their pets, about the things they love to do, about the activities that they might participate in, and feel good about it while we're exercising and enjoying fresh air in nature. Okay, let's walk. Walk and talk.
Hi, guys. Have a good one here.
Welcome to Jim's Eatery. This establishment is owned by the famous chef, Miss Shelley. There's plenty of spacing between tables. There's also an option to B-Y-O-F, bring your own food. Food prepared freshly and ready-to-go bags.
How are students able to work in groups now that it is hybrid?
Oh, boy, that was a real challenge, because we have to stay six feet apart. So it was very lucky for us when Google Meets decided to do a breakout room. So students who are inside the class can actually work with partners who are at home through these breakout rooms.
Okay, Leela, let's go look at what question I got wrong. Number one, I mean, three. Ah, it was B. I answered D. The number of bowls is a factor of the weight of the bowls. I answered the number of bowls is a half of the weight of the bowls.
So 16 divided by 3 is 48.
You already did number two.
So 16 times 4 is what? What is 16 times 4? I have scrap paper. I'm going to just do it quickly. So what's 6 times 4? What do you do to take breaks or have fun?
Well, we still combine our snack break with a mask break. So usually, we go outside, and if not, then we have use of the gym so the students can remove their masks and still have snacks. Plus, we still find ways to have a lot of fun. October 30th, our Halloween dance party is outside in the snow.
Why do they call it the novel coronavirus? It's a long story. Dot, 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 dot.
I'll tell you a coronavirus joke now, but you'll have to wait two weeks to see.
Why don't chefs find coronavirus jokes funny? They're in a bad taste.
Toilet paper plays an important role in my life.
What types of jokes are allowed during quarantine? Inside jokes.
Is there anything that you do to test students' knowledge?
Well, I can still incorporate formative assessment by having students participate in a game of flash smash. Another round of flash smash. 560 divided by 7.
80.
80 is correct. Sophia got that one first. Good job, you guys. 420 divided by 7.
60.
Woo, you guys are getting much better at these. Good job. But Mia got it first. Okay? 320 divided by 8.
In honor of hybrid learning, we have prepared a very special segment to end our show titled "Remember When?"
That's all tonight for Class Act. Good night.
Good night.
Good evening. I'm Olivia Sherrons.
And I'm Justin Carvalho.
We have prepared a very special segment called "Remember When?" This will highlight what learning is like in a pandemic.
Hi, boys. Remember when, hybrid, we fought to a car and not a classroom?
Kami. Remember when Kami was only the name for a girl and not an annotation tool?
Chat. Remember when you and a friend sneak a quick chat in class when the teacher wasn't walking and always responding to questions in the chat box of Google Meet?
Chromebook. Remember when a book was just printed pages bound together and not a portable device?
Mouse. Remember when a mouse would just load it, going across your floor, and all it would use was your computer?
Remember when remote meant something you held in your hand to guide TV channels and not working at a computer in your home?
That's all for the special segment. Thanks for joining us.
Hey, kids. Have you heard about the newest way to complete your assignments? No more sharpening your pencils, no more wasting paper, no more losing your work.
So I'd like to thank Rebecca Ashley, our fourth-grade teacher, for putting that together, and our wonderful students. And I can add one. I can remember when Zoom was a TV show when I was a kid, and now it's a way we meet with each other. So I was just curious. I'm hoping that that gave you a glimpse into what happens in a classroom from both perspectives, from the kids at home and from the kids who attend in person. And I will say that our administrators, including myself, we try to get into as many classrooms as possible, both in-person and virtually. And it is wonderful to see the amount of engagement that is taking place with our Acushnet students. I see that Rebecca had to leave, but I want to publicly thank her for the time that she put in to put this together. And I was just curious if anybody had any comments or questions about this, "A Day in the Life," and I would say "A Day in the Life" of a Acushnet student as well as a hybrid teacher.
Well, thank you, Rebecca, and the students for putting that great video together. My kids are in the hybrid program, so I can say that that's the type of engagement that I'm seeing and hearing here at home. And so it's great to see. And clearly, teachers have really had to have, they've had to be really innovative and creative in the way that they're teaching. And so bravo, and, you know, well done.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay? Just, Carla, one thing. So my son now is in the hybrid model. So I've had the luxury to experience TACAA, the Acushnet hybrid model, and the Rochester hybrid model, and now the Frehhaven hybrid model. And I have to say that Acushnet has done excellent with those. And I just want to say that publicly now that I've experienced four models and since September, that we're doing really well. So kudos to everyone who put so much work into that. Thank you. A lot of thought was put into this, which is a great segue into our next presentation. I'm going to ask Monique Cote and Jean Downey if they could join us for the next presentation. But, you know, these two ladies, I've asked, we've had to repurpose their job this year based on our reopening plan and being in a pandemic. Both of them were computer teachers in both buildings. So Mrs. Cote was at Boyd Middle School. Mrs. Downey was at the elementary school. And what we repurposed them for was to really help our staff and the adults adapt to all of this new technology. And the great thing about it is, just in the short segment that Rebecca Ashley did for us tonight, you can see that those skills are being utilized and transferred, not only to her in her class, but you can see that our students are actually utilizing these technology skills. So the skills are being transferred all the way through to our students and their life skills that will be needed. And you'll hear from Mrs. Cote and Mrs. Downey tonight that, you know, I think while we want to go back to normal and not deal with this pandemic, right? I think there's no going back in terms of the progress that our district has made in terms of technology. I think it would be really impossible and a disservice to our students if we went back. Many students are thriving with this digital platform and technology, and it's a balance. But tonight, we just wanted to start the discussion about how we move forward with the technology. And, you know, this could involve later on a change in their jobs in terms of what they do. Because, as you know, all of our students in Acushnet now all have their own Chromebooks. So there's really not a big need at this point in time to go off to the computer lab and see a computer teacher, right? So things are evolving and changing, and Acushnet is adapting to those changes. And I think what you'll get out of the presentation tonight is just how we have adapted and utilized that learning time on Wednesdays for our staff. It's been put to very, very good use. And really, it's a lot due to these two ladies, as well as the rest of our tech department. So I want to publicly thank both of them for all of their hard work. And, you know, they totally did it with a smile. And we asked them to change their jobs, and it was never an issue. They just went with the flow, and they went with what the needs were for our students. So I, again, want to thank you both. And with that, I'll let you do the introduction for this.
Can you see our screen?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, so the immediacy of remote learning has created a need for Acushnet public schools to integrate more technology more widely and more quickly than anyone would have planned. Our school community was unexpectedly thrown into the deep end of the educational technology pool.
We accept this challenge to collaborate with all stakeholders to develop a rich, technology-infused K-8 curriculum and to support teachers with meaningful technology professional development to support the hybrid model.
We began this journey with an essential question and believe in explaining the what, why, and how of what we are doing. At some point, remote and hybrid learning are likely to end, and our school community will be back face-to-face in physical classrooms.
However, that does not signal the end of technology integration. We will continue to be a one-to-one Google district, and technology will permeate instructional delivery and how students engage with the material and demonstrate learning.
Since the 2020 shift to remote learning, the technology integration specialist role has changed dramatically and has become an intrinsic element of our school community. By the end of this presentation, we hope to raise awareness of how our roles have changed. The SAMR model, developed by Dr. Ruben Puntadorra, describes the commonsense progression of technology integration. Bloom's taxonomy, developed by Dr. Benjamin Bloom, describes a hierarchy of human cognition.
You can see how the integration of technology supports the acquisition of higher-order thinking skills.
How do technology integration specialists fit at Acushnet public schools? We observed that developing a technology-infused, multidisciplinary K-8 curriculum was a bit of a hot potato. As it was a hidden job, technology integration required the input of many already very busy stakeholders.
There was no liaison to coordinate all the moving parts.
Together, we bring 63 years of K-12 teaching experience in multiple districts and hold seven certificates in the areas of K-12 instructional technology, 1-6 elementary education, 5-12 English, and 5-12 math. We are Google-certified educators. Having served as both academic classroom teachers and a specialist, we understand the uniquely challenging role of teaching an entire school population at multiple grade levels simultaneously.
The result is we are extremely well-organized, flexible, up-to-date with current practices, self-motivated, and effective communicators. With our combined expertise, we are eager to model effective collaboration and move forward with district-wide technology integration.
Since spring of 2020, with full remote learning, we have supported our school community by providing more than 200 hours of technical support and professional development.
Additionally, we have created the Responsible User Guidelines, the Chromebook Initiative Agreement, and the Chromebook orientations for our district.
We created webpages for students, families, and teachers to access information regarding technology and the hybrid model more easily.
We have also held two educational technology informational meetings for families via Zoom to share information about the website, the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, and to answer any additional questions.
We have four professional development activities planned for our district this spring.
We are also continuing with instructional support and facilitating communication among stakeholders.
We will continue We will continue updating our website and reaching out to parents.
We will also explore technology-related grant writing opportunities and promote wellness activities in our district.
We are excited this school year to be pursuing supervisor-director licenses through a mentored apprenticeship.
Once we have completed and earned our licenses, we are excited to create an apprenticeship mentoring program for our school community for members to grow in their professional practice. Such a program is unprecedented in our district.
So thank you for your time with that. Are there any questions that we can answer for you?
I have a question. Thank you so much for that great presentation. I'm curious how your technology nights for parents have been received. Are you getting a lot of participation on those?
We had about, we did one in fact last night, we had about a dozen people who participated. And it was great, it was great to have that many people out there. And we included showing them our web, our webpage, and also a form so that people could submit questions, because sometimes, you know, people are shy to, to ask questions, maybe, you know, in that moment. But we're hoping that people will make use of that and, and ask us questions that we can post and make them public, because if one person asked it, there are probably a lot of parents that want to know the same information.
The other thing that we did is we recorded it. So if parents couldn't make it, it's something that only our families will be able to access with the appropriate link. So I want to thank both of them for facilitating those meetings with families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions for Mrs. Cote and Mrs. Downey? Okay, well, ladies, I'd like to thank you so much, because I don't think we would be where we're at right now if it wasn't for your efforts and the efforts of many other people. But thank you for taking the lead on all of our professional development and the support that you continue to offer, not only our staff, but our students in the area of technology. So thank you so much. And I'm hoping that we can have an understanding now of, you know, it is hard to go back, right, to where we were, because I think we've progressed in so many different ways. So thank you, ladies, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And that is all I have for my report tonight.
Okay, great. Then we'll move to the business manager's report. Mrs. Flynn.
Okay, thank you. In your packet, you've got a lot of information for, from updates from me. So I will just quickly go over a lot of the information. You can certainly ask questions if you have any. And I'd like to concentrate most of the time on the transportation IFB. So we'll just start with the budget update. You have that in your, in your agenda. So what I did is, on my report, I broke down what's changed since the last time I reported to you. The major changes are, I put in a surplus for the CIA director salary, but as soon as that person gets hired, that will change as well. Okay. We did have some additional expenses for out-of-district. We had an additional tuition and some fees. And along with that goes transportation. So you'll see that that added, you know, that took away some of the surplus that we have. And you'll also see a change in the TACCA tuitions. In the second semester, we have 27 less students attending TACCA, so the tuition goes down. Okay, so those are the major changes. Also, we received the New Bedford High School tuition, so there's some changes with that. I haven't put that in yet, because we didn't have anything yet from New Bedford High. So you can see, you know, what's changed from last month to this month. So does anybody have any questions on that part of it? Okay. The next update is the COVID-19 expenditures. Now, that really hasn't changed since last month. We haven't made any more purchases, because if you, if you recall, originally we were thinking that we had a deadline of December 30. So we had a big push on all of our expenditures up until then. So we spent most of the town cares money and also the DESI CBRF grant. So there really aren't any, any new expenditures, but they are listed in a report that I included. One thing I do want to tell you is that we just got information from DESI about two additional grants related to coronavirus relief. So the first one is, they're calling ESER2. So in addition to the CARES grant, the ESR grant that we received. And Acushnet is slated to receive an additional almost $305,000. And the point of that grant per DESI is to safely reopen schools and measure and effectively address significant learning loss. And 10,000 of that is earmarked for student mental health services and support. So we are told that more information is coming on that. So hopefully, in, in the reports to come, I can give you more information. And we also had another additional COVID relief grant that came in yesterday. It's an additional $54,325. And again, it's additional assistance to support coronavirus prevention efforts and to maintain and increase educational quality during the pandemic. That one needs to be spent by June 30 of this year. The big $305,000 grant can be spread out until September 30 of 2023. So that's some additional money that we've gotten from, from Department of Ed. Or does anybody have any questions on that?
Great news.
Yeah. So Mr. Willett, our facilities director, submitted some updates that he wanted everyone to be, that we wanted you to be aware of. We're done right now with our floor tile work at AES. We replaced some classrooms and a workroom. We have more to go, but that's going to require some procurement efforts, because now we've, we've already spent what the threshold is. So we still have some more work to do, and we'll be doing those during school breaks, hopefully, you know, over the summer, or maybe during the April vacation. The roof is still intermittently leaking, but as you know, we have our MSBA roof project. We're just waiting for some documents to be submitted by the town to the MSBA, and hopefully we'll be going out to bid shortly for summer construction. Okay. Also, we have some additional work, you know, that workload brought on to our custodians with some of the new things, just like everybody else. I know we talked about it back in October, about now we have all these wonderful air purifiers, but now the filters have to be changed. So that adds some time and effort. Also, the belts for the HVAC system. So we got to get to, into a belt replacement cycle for that. The lighting upgrade from the Green Communities Act through the town is done for this year. So the final phase is slated for next year. And finally, we've been having extensive boiler and pump work. So Mr. Willett is looking into ideas for replacing those, because they're going on 20 years old. So that's all I have for facilities. Does anybody have any questions on that? All right. Before I get to transportation, I'll just quickly go over the school lunch update that Mrs. Sheridan submitted. So she wanted to let us know what's going on in school lunch land. Again, the new thing is we started to offer a take-three meal option. So students who bring their lunch can choose a milk, a fruit, and a vegetable to complement those meals at home. And the bags meet USD and meal patterns, so we can get reimbursement from them. We've been, when we had our fully remote period, January 4th to 15th, we served approximately 281 seven-day food boxes each Wednesday, and that equaled about 4,000 meals per week. So that's really, you know, fabulous. And that was a great effort and a lot of work for our school nutrition department, and it certainly benefited everybody. And it was nice to see on those Wednesdays, you know, everybody coming in and getting their food boxes. So there's a few other items, but I can let, you can read through those yourselves. Finally, transportation. As I mentioned, the past couple of meetings, we're going out to bid for our transportation, our student transportation contract. I believe I mentioned I wanted to use this meeting to get the final specs, to get the specs finalized. There was a few items that I wanted some direction and your input on. And so I'd like to go through those right now. But first, just a quick update on our negotiations are ongoing with our, our school bus vendor for last year's payment and this year's payment. So once we have something, you know, new about that, I'll certainly let you know. But right now, negotiations are still ongoing. So for the bid for the following three years, so some of the changes that, some of the things that I would need some direction on, and after this meeting, what I would like to do, assuming we have agreement, is to publicize the specs and have the bid opening on February 26. And that way, that gives prospective vendors enough time, once we publicize it, hopefully tomorrow, to put together their bid. This is a large bid. You know, it's a large cost for the district, so we need to give them some time to do so. And then with that timeline, I'll be able to report to you at our next meeting, March 2, about who the, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder is. And that's important, too, because that'll let us know what we need to budget for next year, and it'll align right up with our, our budget cycle when we'll need to finalize our budget for the town. So as you know, the big thing is the style of bus. I know that we talked a little bit about these, the past two meetings, and I gave you some additional information that was requested on various opinions about the style of bus. Flatnose, which we have used for many, many years, or standard-style bus. It seems, you know, and you can read through this, I'm sure you have, but it seems like there's not the consensus between the, the transportation consultant that we use, the Mass Association for People Transportation, and also a school bus salesperson, is that both styles of buses have to adhere to the same state safety standards upon manufacture. So there's no, like, one that is, you know, they both have to adhere to the same standards. Okay. Some districts, both, you know, all of the, the voices that I listened to said, some districts might choose one style of bus over another for a particular reason. It might be because the flatnose-style bus has a greater capacity, so they might want to fit more students on the bus. It might be that the flatnose-style bus is more, it's easier to maneuver in, say, cities where there's a lot of tight turns. They might use it that way. Or they may have another particular reason to use it like we have, that we found that as a result of a, of a, of a fatality, we switched to the flatnose-style bus, because at that time, they were believed to be safer at that time. Okay. And I know I went over how the standard style bus has changed over the past couple of years with their build and the sightline. So some of that has changed. So that's, you know, and you can see some of the other comments that we had. You know, the general consensus is with any, with any bid, you know, you want to be specific about what you're asking for, because what you're asking for is what you're going to get. So you want to be sure that, you know, what you get is what you want. You don't want to be so vague that it opens it up, and you just get the lowest bidder, and they're not having good quality requirements. Okay. But generally speaking, the less, you know, specific you are, the more, you know, the more interest you're going to get, and the more competition you may get in the bid. So that's some of the other, some of the other comments about that. So I don't know if anybody has any, you know, discussion about the style of bus, but I would like to hear from you. This is the, the biggest thing that we need to put in the specifications. So I would like to hear, what is the pleasure of the, of the committee?
Go ahead, Mr. Tev.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Downing had asked last time, I believe it was you, Ms. Downing, had asked if, if we could find any statistics about the safety between the two different styles. I don't know if, I searched the web, like, after that, I was like, oh, let's see if I can find something. I found there was nothing. I found that the detail that you had in, in this report here was, was actually better than what I found. It doesn't seem like there's any entity or person out there that's really collecting data on that, which, I don't know if you found anything.
Well, several bids ago, the same topic, of course, came up, and I found the same thing. I was not able to find any study that, you know, fit to what I was looking for. And at the time, I reached out to the same MAPT, Mass Association for People Transportation, person that I've worked with through the years. And she said, no, there's really no specific study. So this year, I asked her the same question. And I also asked that of the transportation consultant, Flahide Consulting, and the bus owner. And I believe what they said was, let me just find it here. There doesn't appear to be any specific study comparing safety data from the different types of school buses. Now, some of the things I found was like, the types of accidents and the types of injuries, but never like something comparing this kind of bus to that kind of bus. So Mr. Flahide looked at national studies over the course of 15-year period on safety data and statistics related to the school bus industry, and found nothing, no specific study. And the owner of the bus company also concurred that he hasn't heard about any which bus is safer, but he, in his experience, suspects as a bus dealer, that there isn't much difference between the two. And he said, buses now have more safety devices than they had years ago. I know that there are some districts that are using flatnose-style buses around here, and there are some that don't use flatnose-style buses. And again, it may just be for whatever particular reason. And sometimes, if you don't specify, a vendor might say, well, I have buses that fit that year that you want, and they're coming off of another contract. Since you don't specify if you've got flatnose or standard style, I've got flatnose, so I'm going to use those buses, because either I've already paid for them, or my lease payments have gone down. So it really is kind of like, what you ask for and who has what you're asking for at the time. And, but certainly, the style of bus is going to impact what the bidders will bid. So that is something that we have to decide on.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think while I was looking for that, I, I guess my gut was telling me, okay, if there was, you know, if there was a compelling trend or, or something, I would think, like, from, from an insurance standpoint, like, there would be something to report. But that's just my, like, insurance companies would say, okay, you want to drive, you know, the, the, the traditional-style bus versus a flat-style, you know, hey, you're going to pay more in insurance, because, you know, our claims history has been X versus with the flat. And so that was kind of what I figured would have prompted some sort of study or something like that, or maybe we would have found something. But the fact that there is nothing probably tells me that if the insurance companies are worried about, then, then there's probably not a huge, you know, difference. But I don't know. I don't know.
Go ahead, Mrs. Combs.
So my understanding was that flatnose buses, you'd be able to see better in front if a child was crossing in front of the bus, exiting or arriving. So what we agreed to on the last contract was flatnose buses, and if there was a reason to have a nose bus, that it had the arm going forward. So the, the person would have to walk at least three or four feet, however long that bar is, in front, so the driver can absolutely see it. Now, I understand there's a lot of new security features in all types of buses now. But I think, I think I'm concerned about just simple human error, right? Because we have the mirrors, we have many other features in the bus, but if they're not used because of a mistake, somebody could still get hurt. So that arm could be a preventer of that, if, because I believe that every time they open the door, the bar comes out automatically. So I would feel comfortable removing the flatnose buses and putting the nose buses as long as the arms were there, so that the driver can absolutely see, you know, a person in front of them. So I'd be willing to concede with the flat noses if the bars were, were, put it on every single bus that we had. I don't know what everybody else's thoughts would that be?
I agree.
Yeah, I support that. I think that's a reasonable request.
Yeah, thank you for, through that history, Sarah. And I also agree. I think that that's a happy medium.
Generally, these flatnose buses are used in cities, correct? Because they're easy at maneuver. So you don't really see them in, in the setting, well, the districts.
Correct. That's what Mr. Flahide and the bus company owner, the dealership, had mentioned that. And also MAPT, that you see them depending on the, they use these. And also MAPT, that you see them depending on the, they use the term topography of the area. So certainly, like, maybe a city like Worcester, right? That you're in and out of side streets all the time, that might be a reason why they would use it. And also, the capacity, you can load more kids for whatever reason on that, on that flat-nose-style bus. But right now, we, in our specifications right now, we're asking for seventy-one-seat capacity. And actually, the buses that are being used in our contract are a seventy-seven-seat capacity. So even when we were in normal times, we weren't chock or block full on every single bus. Yes, there were some routes that were more full than others, and, you know, conversely, there were some routes that didn't have as many kids. But overall, we certainly had enough seats on the bus for the kids that wanted transportation. So I don't see that as being an issue.
Another, I'm sorry, go ahead, Craig.
What years do we currently have for buses?
I'm sorry, Craig, I didn't, I didn't catch that.
What years do we have on our, on our line of buses?
So the buses that are used in the fleet right now are a mixture of two thousand seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. In our IFB from three years ago, we requested two thousand and twelve or newer. So that's what, usually what I've done is each year, I've pushed that age forward. So I have it slated, you know, if there's no other discussion on it, for two thousand and fifteen or newer. And I did double-check with the transportation consultant, and he's worked for many, many years in the school bus industry, and on that two thousand fifteen year, and he said that should be, that should be fine. If things stay the same, certainly, there's a yard full of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen buses. If a new bidder comes in, then they'll have to provide us with two thousand fifteen or newer. You know, you don't want to go so old, because several bids ago, we rejected the bids because of the cost lowered. We made the buses older, and what you find is, is you really don't save as much money going very old because the vendor's going to put in, you know, contingency for repairs, to repair things, you know, as the buses get older. So it's kind of a fine line, and we found over the years that this age has suited us.
I would think the older you go, too, you're losing some of that safety technology that continues to evolve over the years as well, so.
Right, certainly, when you see buses on the road, the newer bus, it's just like a newer car, looks a little bit different than some of the older buses, and that's evident in the nose buses because now you've got a more streamlined nose. So, yeah, you're right, Mrs. Downing.
Ms. Flynn, do we have, do our buses have the, what do you call those, the video cameras?
They do.
They do, okay.
We, we have video capability. We don't have, we don't use the audio because we've been advised by legal counsel that we cannot do that, but we certainly have video on the buses. And in the event that there's, you know, something that takes place, an altercation on the bus, or, you know, anything, the principals, they would be the first people that would get a report on that, would call for the video. And the bus company has been, you know, amenable to giving us the video, of course. So it does take a little bit of time because they have to pull it off the hard drive, put it on a flash drive, and send it over to us. But yes, to answer your question, we do have video.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question, Mrs. Flynn, can you remind me, when we say goes to the low, the bid goes to the lowest responsible bidder? How do we define responsible in that?
Okay, so in the law, responsible and responsive, so what that means is responsive means everything you've asked them to provide you in the bid, whether it be certain required documents, information that you've asked for, for example, we ask for accident history, we ask for any legal settlements over the past couple of years, we ask for recommendations from certain, like, if you've driven, if you had a bus contract in Massachusetts over the past five years, we'd want to hear, say, three of them. So as long as they've provided everything you've asked for, they're responsive. Responsible means that they have the capacity to fulfill your contract, and that would come in from checking references, right? So say we get bids, and the lowest bid is Kristen's Bus Company, and she underbids by a law. And Kristen doesn't drive the bus, any buses, anywhere, right? So I wouldn't be responsive because I can't give you my references. But also, you know, you have no history on this. So you don't know, you don't have any confidence that that bus company, even though they're the lowest bidder, can fulfill your requirement. So that's where responsible comes in.
If there was something in the accident history that we found unacceptable, we could, we could reject it on that basis?
I would say so, yes, yes, depending on, you know, the severity of it, right? You're not going to reject it for, you know, a rear end or something like that, but certainly a major accident you're going to. So what will happen is when we open the bids, it's public, so the public is invited, the vendors usually show up, they're opened in public by me, and they have to be read aloud, okay? It's a prescribed process through mass general law. And then after that, it doesn't mean that just because they're the lowest bidder that they're awarded the contract. After that, the work comes in on my end to do just that, to check the references, to make sure they've included everything, to make sure they've provided the proper insurance, the performance bond, and any information that we've asked for. Another thing we ask for is, you know, we want to know what training you give your drivers and what the schedule is and things like that. So, so between the bid opening on February twenty-sixth and our next meeting, that work will come in for me to do to make sure that that, that that company is responsive and responsible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Okay, any other comment on this? Sounds like we are in alignment around what you need for the specifications. Kristen, do you need anything else from us this evening to move forward?
No, that's it. And the only other things that I just want to bring your attention to for changes, I know we talked about the dispatcher. So you can see in my report that it's a nice-to-have, it's used more at the elementary school. So I think what we'll continue to do is what we did in the last bid, is say, you know, "How much will you take off if we don't have that onsite dispatcher?" It's useful to have the onsite dispatcher because that dispatcher here acts as our spare driver. So say it's two-thirty, and we're about to dismiss Ford, and a bus driver calls in sick at two-thirty. We've got somebody sitting right here in our office that can hop on a bus in the yard behind my office and take the bus without any service interruption. Not having that onsite dispatch means now we have to bring somebody in. So whether that's a dispatcher that's sitting at, you know, in this, for this year, at the Westport Office for Camarals, that could take some time or someplace else. So that dispatcher, that onsite dispatch does play an important role as our spare driver. So I think that that's what, you know, after hearing from the principals and looking at it, perhaps that's the direction that we're going to go into with that, unless anybody has any real, you know, feelings one way or the other on the onsite dispatch.
I think we should just, we should leave it to find out how much it costs before we decide.
Yep.
Yeah.
The final other things, as I mentioned, that I would be meeting with our vendor, just for any, like, cost savings. One was a small change to the field trips, which will help out. So suggested in most contracts, which we didn't have, is a minimum charge. So that will allow them not to bid so high on the mileage and the wait time. So when our, when we take a field trip to Boston, we're paying a lot per mile to make sure that they get, you know, they cover the cost of those smaller trips. So having a minimum charge before the price per mile, before the wait time, will help. So that'll help our, you know, our field trips, our athletic events, and it will certainly help, you know, our PTO that funds these trips, once we hopefully get those going. So that was one, one change. And the other change was in the insurance. I sent our insurance requirements from the last bid over to the town's insurer and asked them to review it, and they have recommended increasing most of the limits. So we will do that. I will caution you that we did that several bids ago. And of course, as the limits go up, the policy premium goes up, and that gets passed into the bid. So what we did several bids ago is we actually, the same year that we rejected the bids and started over again, changed the year, made the buses older, we went back to lower limits. So we'll certainly go with what our insurance company has recommended for the limits, but I do caution you that that may be an area that could increase the price, okay? And also, finally, we looked at the late bus dismissal time, and we're going to change it so that the late dismissal is at four o'clock instead of three forty-five. And what that will do is it'll allow the buses to come back from the elementary runs so that they're available to do, to be one of the two buses for the late bus. So what was happening is, is that the contractor would have to get an additional bus outside of the eleven we require to run the late buses on those two days a week. So by changing the time by a few minutes, that will allow us to get our fleet back so we can use a bus that's already, we're already paying for, right, and a driver, and just have an incremental cost. Now, what this means is, is that the teachers are contracted until three forty-five PM. So the students that come to take the late bus will have to remain in a community area, for example, the library, and someone will be supervising them, whether it will be administration or if we can pay an extra duty pay, so there will be that small extra cost. But I believe it'll pay off in the long run because now, instead of making sure they have eleven buses to service us, they now, now they'll just use those same eleven buses without having to pull a bus from here or there for those two days a week. So I just wanted to mention that, so if you do see some changes with the late bus, and that's, that's what it may be if we do go back to having late bus service because I know sometimes we have not been able to include that in the budget in the, in the past few years. Okay, so that's, that's all I have for the IFB. Again, I'm going to, I've done some of the required advertising because there is time limits, and get that finalized tomorrow and put out. And by March second, I will be back with a recommendation for you for a bus contract, hopefully.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Flynn.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. There are a number of communications that have been listed there that are in the packet. Thank you for the very regular, consistent communications that are going out about COVID. It's unfortunate that they're daily, it seems, but it's great to see these regular communications. I just think the communication has been fantastic, so thank you. Kelly, Kelly, I don't know if you want to circle back, is there any public comment that we'd like to share before we move, close our session tonight?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you. We do have executive session this evening. We will not be returning to this meeting. So I just need a motion now to, to conclude, so we can move into the next part of our meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. We'll move into our roll call.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Tev?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, and there is a separate link for our executive session, so just wanted to note that. And, and I want to make mention before we adjourn here that our next school committee meeting will be held remotely on Tuesday, March second, at five-thirty. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Actually, we scheduled a special meeting next week, if you want to discuss that.
That's right. Thank you for that reminder, Dr. Bailey. So there will be a special scheduled school committee meeting next Tuesday, February ninth, at five-thirty. And there's just one agenda item that evening. We will be hearing the focus group results. Dr. Miasus is a consultant that we contracted to facilitate a number of focus groups throughout the district. Thank you to parents and all the stakeholders who participated in those. So Dr. Miasus will be joining us next week to share the findings of those focus groups. So please tune in for that. It'll be a great presentation. Did I get it all, Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Great.